Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, welcome. Today is the first meeting of the new year. Today is January 7th, 2020. It's 8:00 PM and we are at the Planning and Zoning Commission General Meeting for the first one of the year. Let's get right into it. The first one we have tonight is deliberations only on the following. It is a proposed amendment to the Darien Planning and Zoning Regulations, COZR number 5-2019, put forth by Felix F. Calori, Inc., doing business as BMW of Darien. I'm sorry Kara, I'm sorry. Proposal to amend section 756 of the Darien Planning Regulations permit increase of building coverage from 25, 20% to 25% and building height from 25 feet to 30 feet for properties that meet certain criteria in the service business SB zone. Also properties must be served by public water and sewer, be minimum of three acres in size and be located within 1,000 feet of the central business district CBD. Applications would be subject to a special permit review by the commission. Public hearing was closed on December 3rd, 2019. Decision deadline is February 7th, 2020. Jeremy, why don't you just give us a quick overview on what we did, what we looked at? I've got some plans and comments too, but why don't you go first?
Sure. You may recall this was a two night public hearing, November 19th. It was continued to a special meeting on December 3rd. The proposal, as Steve mentioned, was to increase, to modify the zoning regulations to allow an increase in building height, building coverage for certain service business zone properties near the CBD zone. Maybe recall the applicants talked about the nature of the properties near downtown and why this would be appropriate. The criteria for the commission to adopt a zoning regulation amendment is to make a finding that it's consistent with the town plan of conservation and development. The applicant did submit materials from the town plan and explain why they believed that it was consistent. You may also recall that a number of neighbors from Middlesex Commons were present at the public hearings and also hired counsel Jackie Kaufman from Carmody Torrance. She submitted a memo for the record which discussed in depth her desire and her clients' desire to see more criteria in the zoning regulations, standards relative to lighting and buffering and noise that they suggested be put directly in the regulations if the commission were to adopt something. And we talked a little bit at the last hearing about whether a proposal, if the regulations were amended, the certain sections that it would need to comply with relative to site plan, special permit, section 944 on buffering, and whether the commission wants to put more criteria on top of those or just rely on those existing standards which are now in the regulations. That kind of brings us full circle to where we've been a couple of months ago.
I think, thank you Jeremy, I think in part of the applicant submission, they gave good evidence of all the surrounding zoning districts are 25% lock coverage, whereas this one is only 20%. I also think in their application, I think we said prior to the existing applications, we could have done this if we really knew about it when we amended the zoning regulations earlier. That would have, if it came forth, we probably would have looked at it at that point in time. Relative to the height of the building, I don't remember too much evidence or discussion relative to that, but it's, I think it's consistent with other, you know, buildings in our neighborhood and other towns. I did make reference to that most, most, the reason why the emphasis of this came up is because BMW as a corporation globally requires a lot of their dealerships to get refreshed every 10, 15 years and this one has been done in 10 years. So I'd like to open up to comments, what do you guys have? Why don't you start, Kara?
Just for clarity for the record, you spoke of that the applicants, you know, brought into the record that there were surrounding districts. Did we mean other towns or districts within town that had 25% coverage?
It was, their, their graphic was districts within our town.
Right. So I think, I just want the record to be clear that it was like, that there's already 25% coverage within the town of Darien. So it's not like we're breaking new, you know, it's not like they're asking for a new precedent to be set in terms of coverage. And then on the height, was there anything in the record brought up by the neighbors or by their attorney in terms of issues with height? I thought there was.
I have to reread, right? I have to reread? I know they, they had concerns about, as I said, buffering, noise. One of their, you may recall that part of the Middlesex Commons property is adjacent to what I'll call the rear part of the BMW property.
Yeah.
And they had talked, right now, they had talked about putting their, a preliminary site plan, which was put forth to kind of show what could be built, did show a two-story building there with parking on the roof.
Right.
Which the neighbors felt would be closer to them and more visible potentially.
But I don't think there was much.
And I guess that would more be like a site plan consideration.
I recall the discussion being primarily around use and primarily around parking.
Yeah. And I think, right, wouldn't the right time to be just, to sort of go over height and the specifics as when there's a use, a site plan?
Correct. This is just a zoning change with those two items and to allow structured parking in that zone.
Correct.
That's it.
No, I, just for the record too, I believe we also have a couple other auto dealerships in town that are in the other zone, so it's similar businesses in the same type of, in the same districts too. So again.
Jaguar dealer.
The Jaguar dealership?
Right.
The Chevrolet.
And wasn't?
The one, Jaguar Land Rovers nearby.
Right.
And then there's other.
And the other one was the Whole Foods.
Land Rovers down at the eastern end, end of town. I'm sorry.
Well, I think that point wise, there's only, if this change happens, there's only three properties that can potentially be affected.
Yeah, I think my only other thing, just to, just to comment on, I know there were proposed additional regulations that we could layer in on top. They all seem specific to me to one type of business. And my thought was, you know, what happens 15 years from now?
Yeah.
If there's an entirely type of business that wants to go in there and we have all these regulations and it's, someone to look at and go, this makes no sense.
So keep the regulation to the zone.
The regulation to the zone.
And then be specific in the reg.
And then be specific in the.
In the resolution to the site.
And site plan, yeah.
With a special permit.
Right. So that was my thought.
Okay.
Good point.
I think the, the new provisions of this zone would be well drafted. I think they were well drafted. And I particularly like the fact that, you know, there still needs to be an affirmative finding that no neighboring property would be adversely impacted by parking structures. I think that that gives us a lot of leeway. A special permit application still would need to be done, so we would have our usual broad discretion in that instance to review whatever comes forward. Screening would be important, obviously, but we can deal with all that then. I think we should not micromanage it at this point.
To your point, that was brought up by the applicant's attorney, by the gleason that said that, you know, all this stuff has to be, you have to find a finding that no one is going to be adversely impacted. He told us that, just reminded us.
Yeah, and it's going to be in the, in the language of the amendment.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that we, if it had been brought up, we would have caught this and already had done it. We worked on changing these regulations, so I feel like they're in alignment with the other districts, so I think this makes sense.
I don't want to think that we've dismissed out of hand the comments made by the counsel for the neighbors, let's say, about putting, hanging more issues or restrictions or whatever on these, these proposed changes. But I'm thinking about, we had a conference, a discussion last year about HNL Chevrolet and their lights. Those restrictions are not in the zone that regulates HNL. They had to come to us. And I would, I guess I would prefer, as I think, probably I'm repeating some of the comments already.
That's fine.
Rather than hang a lot of bells and whistles on this change, make it as simple as straightforward with the idea that we can review these issues of concern if and when a, an application comes forward.
Okay. Sounds like we're on the same page.
Yeah.
That we're going to revisit this if an application ever does come forth, because there's going to be a special permit, a site plan review, we'll go over lighting, buffering, rooftop parking.
Right. And the adverse effect for neighbors is.
Is very important.
Very important to us.
Okay.
So Fred and I will draft something reflecting the comments tonight and have it ready for your next meeting on January 21st.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next item, but forbidden. Deliberation of possible decision on the following. Amendment to the special permit application number 79D as in dog, Darien Nature Center, town of Darien, 120 Brookside Road. Proposal to amend the special permit application 79D to permit an increase in use of the Darien Nature Center and a number of participants slash visitors to the various program uses and activities, as well as for the periodic special events with restrictions on use. Public hearing was closed on November 19th. Decision deadline is January 23rd, 2020. We graciously have a draft of the amendment. I went over it myself, draft resolution. Is that it? Yeah, this is it. So if you guys don't mind, I'll go through my quick comments, which I think are very limited, so then we can pass it on to anybody else who has comments. I think it's basically fine. I'm looking at page two, down on the bottom, it was noted the valet system has been developed for drop off and pickup. Want to call it a valet parking system?
Slow down.
Page two.
Yep.
Three, closer to the way down the page, fourth bullet.
One, two, three, four.
Increase camp participation for maximum of 24 children to 85 children. It was noted that a valet system has been developed for drop off and pickups. I think that's a valet parking system?
Correct. And it's not a valet like if you went to a restaurant, it's more of a, parents pull up, they bring the child out to the car and you just keep driving, so the parents don't have to get out of the car.
Yes, on parking.
Yeah, I got it as a valet, like, you know.
Yeah, it's not like.
Jeremy's going to take your car, right.
Valet pickup system.
Yeah. So valet pickup parking system, you want to say that?
Something like that.
That a drop off parking system.
Okay.
Okay. Next was, it comes up a bunch of different times. The next bullet down, it says, it's about parking spaces that need to be rented from the Parks and Rec Department.
Permitted.
Is rented the right word?
I think it's permitted.
Yeah, I don't know, what is?
You can rent something for zero dollars.
No, but I thought they, no, they said they were going to seek a permit from Parks and Recs and then that Parks and Recs had the ability to deny it.
Yes.
Based on their own usage and needs.
Yes.
Right. And there can be a fee attached to permit.
Yes.
Yeah, whatever. That's not our purview, that's there.
So it's a permit with a fee, so we'll say permitted.
Yeah.
Okay. That comes up a bunch of different times, the word rented.
Okay, well, global search and replace.
Okay. The next thing that I had was number five, middle of the page, third bullet, used for temporary twos. That means a two-year-old kid, right? It's the third bullet?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Used for, 25 parks or areas are used for temporary twos.
Are used for, are used temporarily for, oh, hold on.
Because we're all two temporarily.
We all were.
Especially two-year-old kids.
It's fleeting, no many time.
I think the, what happened was when the applicant, Ms. Wetmore, submitted, I think that's the way she referred to it.
Are used, yes.
Is their twos program.
For two-year-olds, children.
Two-year-olds programs.
Temporarily for, for the twos program.
For the twos program.
Twos program.
The twos programs, which is maybe calling.
Temporarily for.
Two-year-olds.
Yeah, for, yeah, for the two-year-old.
The program for two-year-olds. That probably makes sense.
Yes.
That would be, if I read that, having known nothing, I would admit.
The program.
The next sentence.
Two-year-old children.
The next sentence after that, it says, some park needs to be rented from the Parks and Recs, that's the word rented again.
Yeah, permitted.
I'm onto the page four, item C at the bottom. It's when they have to put together their calendar. I just want to give them a little bit of leeway.
Yeah.
If they don't do their planning calendar until after Christmas.
They might want to change it.
You know, so I said annually in January or when the fiscal planning calendar is finalized and/or approved.
Okay.
Starting in the, instead of January 2021, in the first quarter of 2021. I know Middlesex, it's not had their annual meeting yet, so they don't do it until January 21st.
Oh, I see.
Annually in January, so you wanted to read annually.
Well, annually.
In the first quarter.
In the first quarter, starting January 2021.
No, just take out.
No, no. It says annually in January or in the fiscal.
Or how about annually, like, on or about the first, because if they.
I would just say in the first quarter.
Yeah. I said when the fiscal planning calendar is finalized or approved. Like Middlesex doesn't do their calendar.
Annually when the, say that again?
Annually in January or when the fiscal planning calendar is finalized or approved.
Yeah, because I do want to give them some leeway, because I think they mentioned that sometimes they don't know about an event, you know, the event might occur in, if they find out about it in June and it's going to be in October.
The second sentence.
The events can't be, the special events can't be in the calendar.
Annually in Q1 or.
Well, the second half of that sentence, it fixes it.
Right. Or when fiscal.
And notify the department as the event is modified throughout the year.
Okay, yeah.
So we already covered that.
It's modified throughout the year.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Then the last one I have is page six, kind of sort of middle of the page. It's the third bullet. 25 nature center parks, overall parking on the north side of the site. I don't know if that was the park or the nature center site.
Wait.
Where are you?
Where are you?
Third bullet under K.
Okay.
Middle of the paragraph.
Yeah, we can't, other than the.
Staff may also, staff may also park within the 25 nature center parking space as well as the overall parking on the north side of the site.
That's the, that's the baseball field parking.
Okay.
I know, but did we, did we define site in here? I don't think it's.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is that the, instead of saying the word site, is that the nature center site?
No, it's cherry lawn.
What's the cherry lawn property?
So we defined cherry lawn as the site?
So we'll just, just change the word to site to cherry lawn.
Or park.
Need site of the park.
Okay.
That's it. I'm done. Jim, anything?
You've got everything I have.
Awesome. Jen?
Yeah.
Jen's good?
All good.
I'm good.
Kara?
Yes.
Okay. Will we allow to vote on this tonight?
Yeah, this is with those changes, I think we got the changes that everyone discussed. It's basically approving the request as put forth. I don't, I think that was our intent. That's what we heard from the commission was basically what they put forth is essentially what's being approved with a few tweaks in terms of providing calendars and going to Parks and Rec, making that clear that they need to get permits for the parking in certain situations.
And the, right above item E, it says entitled the net effect of change summary. That's going to be in the file.
Yes, there's a.
It's not attached, it's in a way, shape or form.
So that's that chart, Cheater?
That's the chart that they presented, it's.
Yep.
With the revisions.
We did this once with the lights, where we attached some green sheet and it was a pain and it didn't work. And it came back later to bite us, so that's why it's not attached, because if somebody emails it, you don't get the green sheet. So this is going to be in the file. Okay? That's the reason why I make sure it's not an attachment.
Wait, say that again?
Yeah, where are you?
I'm on, in, in, right above item E.
On page five?
It says all the modifications as requested by the applicant in the three-page chart submitted by the applicant entitled net effective change summary.
Submitted and incorporated by reference.
Right, so that's kind of sort of in here, but you don't want to refer it and make it a part of this document, but it's in the file.
But everything, we say in the beginning of the document that everything they presented and testified to is incorporated by reference.
And that would be standard in most.
No, exactly. So like, so we, then if we want your effect, then we have to change this.
A lot to change here.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you want it incorporated by reference or not?
No, just the way it is, it's fine.
No, but the document's incorporated by reference.
No, but that document's in the file is all I care about.
It's not.
Because it's part of the record.
Yeah, it's part of the record, but we, that's covered in, like, the beginning of the document.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
Is that okay? All the same page? I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Jim's the second.
Just making clear that it's incorporated, like, right?
Yeah, that, those three sentences, just, those three lines are now.
You're saying it's attached to this.
It's incorporated by reference, it's not attached.
Since incorporated reference in the file.
It's not, but I think.
Separate to the file included in this.
If we want it, it's going to be in the, I don't know, will it be in a file or is there?
It's always in the file.
It's always in the file.
Do we actually, where's the language incorporated by reference?
All of the modifications are.
And the updated revised version of that is in the file.
No, that, that special language, it's not in there.
Already.
Already.
You're referring to all the modifications.
Is incorporated by reference actually in the language?
I thought it, wait.
I don't see it.
Am I right? No, yes, we talked about.
Well, we've.
I guess I'm just wondering why.
We talked about everyone's testimony and that all the documents.
I mean, we could certainly.
It's going to the first page.
Take out that paragraph if you want to.
The statements of the applicant, the testimony contained in the record.
If that's what we typically do.
All of which material is incorporated by reference.
Usually in plans, if you look at another one, it talks about the detailed plans, it's like.
That are part of the file.
Right.
Which would be what this.
Correct.
Okay, I was going to say.
Not incorporated by reference, but in the file.
Where are we saying that?
Oh.
We're saying, we're saying everything, on page one, we're saying everything incorporated by reference.
No, we aren't. Where's the sentence?
It does.
Okay, where?
So wait, can you help me, sorry, my lawyer. So, does that mean that it's, instead of just being in the file, it's incorporated reference in this packet, this file packet?
No, it's incorporated by reference in terms of like the entire testimony, the entire written and oral record that's been recorded, that's what we recorded the hearings.
Right.
So the entire record is incorporated by reference in here. If you want to incorporate specific things by exhibit or by including them in a file, you need to separately note that either in a footnote or somewhere else. And if we want to do that, but I can't, I'm not clear if Steve wants to have that chart specifically noted or not specifically.
I don't want it specifically noted.
Then it's finally, it is.
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
And leave it big.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
If you wanted noted that that document is in fact included in the file, which we know it is, you can note it in a footnote without highlighting it, you can note it in a footnote. But by reference of this bottom, like line, which, all of which material is incorporated by reference.
Okay.
That can mean it's in the foot, I mean, you're not specifically saying it's in the file, but it is.
Right.
Correct.
It's supporting information, all which is part of the file.
So can share these, these three lines here?
Where are you, please?
These are the ones that Steve just referenced.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we just be striking them because they're just going to confuse the issue?
That is, actually, that's a good point. All the modifications are as requested by this applicant in the three pages.
See, the part that I like, if you go to the very.
If I was a reader, I would want a notation in here. If I was a person reading this and wanted to make it clear to a reader, I would put a footnote here and say, you know, included in file.
Right, but we did.
If you don't want that.
I don't want it attached.
Then I would strike those lines.
I don't want it attached.
I think we want to strike the lines, yeah.
Because if you go to the very, very last paragraph, so all provisions and details of the applications will be binding conditions of the action.
But we.
Okay, what do you think, Jeremy?
I think we, I have no problem striking lines. I think what the commission has discussed tonight is the fact, I think the whole commission agrees that basically the commission is approving everything as was presented. Leila Wetmore put everything in this chart and so we said it verbally, it'll be in the minutes, we can just.
The chart was just a, just a way to simplify their testimony, right?
Because I think, as you're saying, the commission is approving all changes by request, except for the restrictions as events as noted above, highlights that chart, which I think she created on her own, sort of like.
To facilitate.
Add hot, to facilitate this, not.
I think you were.
With respect. And I'm a layman, okay? The, the testimony is part of the record. It's on TV.
Yes.
It's on the tape, it's in writing, it's in the file, it's in the, anything she put forward, including the chart, is on the record.
Correct.
So I think this paragraph as written is fine. I don't think you have to do anything more.
That's all, yeah, I agree with you, I think it's fine. I wouldn't change anything.
As a layman, that's my view, but I stand corrected by learned counsel.
I knew I was highlighting the chart.
I just wanted to make it as simple as possible. It seems to me that those, that little part just makes, it's just going to confuse someone reading it down the road.
It's up to you guys. Either way, it's fine with me, I don't think it adds a lot, I don't think it subtracts a lot, it's just, up to you guys.
Let's debate for an hour.
No.
Lose the time! You've got like 59 minutes.
I'm those who are striking it because I'm not a lawyer and either way, it's in the record. So that's mine.
And it's in the file.
It's in the file.
It's available to everybody.
Don't, yeah.
You don't like the paragraph or you don't care?
No, I like it, but if I, I'm hearing that we don't, that it's, that you don't want it attached officially and by saying, all the modifications are as requested by the applicant in this specific document, except for a few things, is what we're approving. So then it's like, that's it, okay, then what you're approving is in that document. It literally is highlighting that document is what we're approving. So that kind of highlights something that should be attached.
Just, just as an example, if you look at some of the other resolutions that are in the, in our minutes, it says in there like site plan 17-101P.
Yeah, but minutes are different than this.
Hold on, hold on, it's in, it's in a resolution, I'm just saying, as an example, it's, the resolution of another application is in these minutes, so all those documents are in, so if somebody, he comes in later and goes, hey, listen, they didn't fill it, it's in the document, that's why it ends up being in there.
We're saying what we're approving is what's in that chart without specifying what we're approving. Where, when we went through four pages.
You want to enter out?
But I'm saying we went through four pages specifically saying what we're designating.
She wants it out.
And approving.
You want to enter out?
I would just take it out, I think, I think it just.
Take it out.
It's fine, it's out. It's okay.
Okay.
The bullets preceding that paragraph highlight everything that the commission is approving.
Got it.
And so it's a misdocument, or I'm gonna see it.
Thank you.
Got it.
Good.
Okay, are you good?
Yep.
Okay, have we voted to approve it already?
Nope, we have a motion by Jennifer, seconded by Jen.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
Yeah.
Motion to approve it as amended.
We said that, seconded, all is in favor.
Look at us, look at us.
Six to zero.
Done. Thank you. All right, on to minutes, approval of minutes, December third. I read them, and I didn't find a thing, the only first two pages matter, because everything else are resolutions, and you can't change the resolutions.
Yep.
Okay, intended motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Sure.
I have George Riley.
Mr. Riley, Larry, is that a board, on the scoreboard?
Yeah.
Six to zero.
Six to nothing, great, okay, can I have a motion to amend the agenda to switch items around?
For what purpose?
I want Jeremy to talk first.
So who?
Second?
Sure.
Great, Jeremy, project status, report.
Sure.
Hit us.
Earlier today, Fred and I met with Marion Castell and Liz Geiger, you may recall that they did a presentation on village districts, the commission said, okay, over the next couple months, you guys start in, do research, background, so today was really our first meeting, staff had background, checked around with other local communities, Marion and Liz are gonna start researching the specific nature of what, I'll call it characteristics, of certain districts that might work, and we expect to report back to the commission in six to eight weeks, once we kind of pull this together, get a sense of what's going on, so we, we have been working in the background on that. Steve, do you want me to continue with calendar update as part of this?
Yep.
Uh, no.
No.
We'll do that after, right?
And that's the only status update I really have.
Did you read Loiseau's email, but can?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about that, really, John's gonna cover that more at our meeting on July twenty-eighth, John.
June, I mean, January.
June, thank you. John, January.
Wishful thinking.
It's gonna be January, but John had a conference call earlier today, he sent the commission an email summarizing the conference call, and I think he's gonna meet with you January twenty-eighth to talk a little bit more about, in detail about the case.
Perfect, okay, chairman's report, my goal, everybody, is to get the meetings to ninety minutes. Okay, so we can all be more than ten o'clock to watch.
Item one.
You're writing it down?
I'm writing that down.
Approved.
All right, next, since our last meeting, we had the state of the town speech, thank you, I had a lot of fun doing it.
Share that on Facebook.
Ah, nice.
Live.
I think it went well, I think some of the highlights of that thing, if you guys didn't see it, is Palmer's, we talked about Palmer's, they got their financing in place, they already broke ground, they're ready to go, Federal Realities Project, they knocked down their one building, their project is a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty million dollar project, they're gonna build there, part of my theme of the speech was the relative strength or the commercial piece of the grand list, which is different from the overall grand list, which John Zagrodsky and the assessor thinks is going down, but we're approving projects that are something like two hundred and fifty million dollars, you know, and it's, what's, what's the tax rate we said, it's like, it's not ten percent or something like that, it's like a million dollars per, per assessed value.
The mil, the mil rate?
No, no, if you, if you equate, if you equate value into taxes.
Grand list value.
So main office value is like, ten thousand dollars in taxes.
Okay.
So you do the math, I think it's pretty high, like, for an example, I think in, in the speech, I said as an example, Kentset, I think, puts one point seven million dollars into the town tax rules, and there's little that we do for Kentset, in my mind.
Seriously?
Police, schools.
Yeah, I think, I think it's only like, seven kids, though.
Are you kidding? I know more than seven kids.
Well, one of them moved, because Holt's daughter was there.
I'm in Oxford.
What are you thinking?
We love them, I mean, we love having them, like, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Their, their, the, the number that they put out there is forty million bucks.
So forty plus one twenty?
Forty plus a hundred and twenty million plus whatever David Genovese says, and, and I never got numbers from him on it, but since that meeting in the, in the town, stated town address, he has closed his financing too.
And do we know what the, do we have an estimate on what that offset will be for taxes coming down, and then that?
Taxes are hidden.
No.
No, no, but if the assessments, based on like, you know.
But for argument's sake, the, the, for, federal is a public document, their number of a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty million dollars, that's not day one, you know, so their total investment over time, which is gonna, their stabilization data, I think, is twenty twenty-two?
Three years down the road.
Yes, three years.
That's not far.
It's not far.
That's not far.
But it's, it's still a big dollar number, it's the part that I want to put forth in the speech, is that people are investing in the town, people are investing in their own homes, our value or building permits in the last couple of years has gone way up, you know, people are putting money into the houses, and we're building a lot of houses, so, that was that, what else? There are other allocations, I'll get to that in a second, OPC meeting, there was an OPC meeting on January eighteenth.
December?
I'm sorry, December eighteenth, one of the thing, important things about that, and I meant to say this a second earlier, since our last meeting, we did have the passing of Mark Thorne, who was a selectman for years, a great town person, Jamie brought that up at the Board of Selectmen, he and I were, I would say, friends, you know, we didn't, it's likely we went out together, but I think he was a great guy, he was always nicest, helped me, I think he did great stuff for the town, that was a sudden death. Relative to OPC meeting, we're done with the community values statement, we don't do anything else?
We submitted it to the selectman's office, and I think it's in their hands now as to what they do with it.
She told me we don't have to do anything else, if they come back to us, something else is gonna happen, Palmer's I talked about, that I talked about, David Genovese, in a month ago, we got the architecture review board to approve what he's doing at thirty-six Old Kings Highway, ironically enough, in December, he bought thirty-four Old Kings Highway, I think we're gonna see that application in.
Probably March.
In March.
Bob Maslin has been working with our office on pulling together the plans, the paperwork, they still have to go to Architecture Review Board.
Right.
And it's basically, it's a small, two-story office building right next to where you are, George, I think.
Thirty, next to where I used to be.
Yeah, and it's a very nondescript building, right next to the big building of thirty-six.
Right.
And the plan is to take it down and rebuild it, and you'll see that in a couple of months.
So, he told me it's a pie-shaped lot.
Yeah.
And it's gonna give you access and whatnot to the rest of the thing, but eventually, there'll be something else there, it may not be tomorrow, but he's gonna put an application for approvals on that thing.
The intention is to ultimately to expand what he proposed, or?
No, I think this is not really separate, it's not really part of the big project, I think David, it just happens to be surrounded by David's project, and he said, you know what, I'll just buy it, take it down, build a new building, and it's actually not gonna be too much bigger than what's there, so next time you drive by, you'll see, what would you call it, five thousand square feet, George, something like this, not a big building.
Not bigger than that, yeah.
And it allows him to reconfigure some of the parking and do some good things there, so it should work out better.
Okay.
So is thirty-six done, I know they re-signed it, basically, but.
They got all, they, they, in November, yeah, I think in November, they went to Architecture Review Board and got their approvals.
Yeah, they should be done soon, if they're not done already, I know they've been out there for.
Long time.
A long time, and they're doing some interior renovations there as well.
Okay, the next OPC meeting is on December fifteenth, which is.
Twilight zone?
Oh, it's going on, it's January fifteenth on a Wednesday, they're at eight o'clock in the morning, at the last meeting, some of the other selectmen did attend, and they sat in the audience right there when whoever did, wherever we sat, so if anyone wants to come, it's nothing to do with eight o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday, you're more than welcome to come and sit in, they're, they're, I think they're fifty-nine minutes.
Yes.
They, they knock them out.
I'll be a little late.
That's fine, it's, the P and Z usually goes last.
Okay, okay.
The guy that goes first is usually John Zagrodsky, because he goes, does his speech, and bolts.
Bolts, okay.
Yeah, he jumps on the train because he goes to the city, there's a P and, PZ and H meeting, and that's the RTM committee meeting, that is on January twenty-second, I got that one right, that's on a Wednesday, the chairman of that committee asked me to go to it.
Amy Barzanti.
Amy Barzanti, I've known Amy for years, when I was on PZ and H, Joe Spain and Fred Conzie used to come and visit us, and it's a kind of a once a year thing, they just got organized, they have five new members, and they just wanna see, you know, want me to go and say hi or do something.
What time is that?
I don't know.
Eight PM usually?
I was gonna say usually seven thirty.
Um, I think it, it will depend on if that's the same night as regularly scheduled RTM meeting, it's a good question, I don't.
Well, RTM meetings are on Mondays.
Oh, this is gonna be a Wednesday?
Wednesday, because she wanted to make it Tuesdays in their regular cycle, I said, don't ever do that, because you can't get me, and you also can't get Jeremy, so.
So I don't know the answer, because especially.
It's gonna be there, I did get a note, and Jeremy's touched about it, on the village district thing, so that's good, relative to the OPC meeting, this is something I got left back with homework to do, and it relates back to you, maybe you saw it on TV, the question came up with regards to a truck traffic plan and a parking plan during construction, and the other thing is, what's the site, what are the sites gonna look at during construction? I'll do the first one, the last one first, and a lot of construction sites now, they put the plastic screening in front that says, like, coming soon, Hollow Tree Self-Storage, there's, there's an airbrush picture on there, the townspeople, including Jamie, she brought it up, wants to know if we addressed that at all in our resolution, you know, any of those?
I don't think we did.
I said no.
We didn't.
Right.
We do need to address that first.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, it's a good.
Was that part of screening?
No, 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 it's ringing during construction.
We did not address.
So, I said to them that that would've been something Architecture Review Board may have looked at, or could look at, but if she wants it to be.
She does.
Something on there that says, like, coming soon, Corbin District, instead of, you know, an orange fence or a green fence, or whatever it used to be, it will look a lot nicer.
Yeah, we've talked about that in the past, and we have allowed it in certain circumstance, Hollow Tree Storage was one where, you know, jeez, there's a lot of people driving by, and a lot of people are gonna call the office, what's this thing gonna look like when it's done?
Oh, yeah, who's she?
So it's in our best interest.
Hundred percent.
And we've told developers, builders, look, if you put up a picture of the project and the name of the project, and it's not advertising for your company.
Yes.
For leasing information call.
Right.
CBRE.
Right. It would be okay just to do the basis.
We are the agents.
So I'll relay that to Palmer's and Federal and David Genovese, that, look, you wanna put up a picture on, because these are multi-year projects.
The amount of people I have, like, from the secretary at school, almost every teacher, people in carpool lines, people in pickup lines that are freaking out and asking about Stop and Shop, and how are we not gonna have a supermarket?
That's, yeah, it's a whole different color, my wife, my wife's mad at me.
No, it's not mad, it's, it's.
Oh, she's mad.
No, but it's, they want information.
Right.
And you can say to them, look at the website.
Right, but this is more picturesque, if you go to Federal now, right now, there's a green, it looks like green grass or bushes.
Helps people have a picture of what may be coming, so they don't, even though there's ample amounts of information.
Everyone needs a visual.
Right.
As simple as possible.
Yes.
Okay, the second thing that came up relative to that.
They feel like things aren't being hidden from them, and things are transparent.
Yeah, totally, even though they are.
The second thing that came up at that meeting relative to the project is truck trafficking plans, we did this once or twice, and I don't remember what happened, is when the trucks come out of Corbin, or come out of Norwood Heights, they wanna know where those dump trucks are going and how they're getting to the highway.
Well.
And I, I threw it back to, to Craig Flaherty, when they did, when they did Parklands, the trucks came out, and they went straight onto the interstate, they wanna make sure that when the trucks come out of, for I would say, Corbin, that they go from Corbin to exit twelve.
Yeah.
Versus going down the Post Road to exit.
Hundred percent.
Eleven. We, I don't ever think we.
Breaking under the bridge, but.
I don't think we ever addressed that.
We did not.
We didn't address it, but in the future.
Yeah.
If it's something that's big, we can address it, I know we did it a little bit, when we did that big fancy house on, like, Contentment Island or Delfield Island.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
We wanted them to go left versus right.
Well, we even had some provision for Berry Lane's traffic, truck traffic.
Yes, that was it, yesterday.
So if we can remember in the next resolutions, if there's something that's of magnitude, that we try to see if we can direct where the trucks are going.
Certainly, like, managing trucks on the crossroad, that's one lane.
The last thing relative to that is parking plan, it comes up during the holiday season at the most, when the, when the town's having a lot of, hopefully shoppers in town, they wanna make sure, and I call them the white vans, that say, like, you know, shock electric, that they're not parked in town lots, that they're parked on site, Federal's got a big enough site, that they're not gonna park on the Post Road and park in Cor, and park in wherever they're gonna park, but we have a plan to where those, you know.
Wait, you mean Dave's Subs?
Correct.
Okay.
Dave's Subs and Palmer's Subs and somebody else's Subs.
I wonder where the subs are all parking, at the Oxford Field.
Palmer's isn't gonna really be.
That's where the subs are parking.
I, I don't know, but it's, the question came back to me, is, you know, are people that are working on David's project, get a park on the other side of the Post Road?
Walking over each other, kind of.
I said, I don't know, I, the only I said relative to that was, the Corbin, big Corbin site is big enough where you can park on there, the little Corbin site, which is phase one, I don't know where those subs park, but David does have the swing lot that he owns, which is the community gardens, which I call Eric Eaton's garden, he told me, and it might've came up when we did it, the plan, that that is a potential site to fit him to park subs.
Maybe make a suggestion, pick a night in the next month when we're not too busy, when we've got a short agenda, and invite David and, and.
He told.
Just to come for five minutes.
Right.
And where are you gonna, you know, where are you gonna truck, where are you gonna?
Get it done.
It's not, it's not in our permission, it's not in our permit.
Right.
But let him know that we're watching it, and it's a concern, and get them to.
Record too.
Right, I spoke to him relative to that, he said, if you wanna amend the resolution, and have he sign anything that says, I will not park on any other site when he's doing his construction, he'd do it in a heartbeat.
Okay. Does the David say that?
Yeah.
David said that? But we still have to deal with Federal and Palmer.
Palmer, correct, Federal, if, if you notice, Federal knocked down their first building, they made a parking lot.
Yeah.
You know, so they, I don't know how many spaces there, there's at least twenty, but I think that's really because you're gonna take away Equinox's parking, which is where Walgreens is gonna go, so it might be a swap. I just don't ever remember addressing that in any resolutions, and I'm on the clock.
But then, I'm going, we should think about parking, like, the things that Jamie's concerned about, parking resolutions.
Those are the three things, okay?
And.
The next thing.
Construction screening.
The next thing I have in my list is, Jamie says five G Wi-Fi is coming, and that's gonna be on our desk, if you listened to the news the last couple of days, the new governor has a big deal about five G on the trains, some way, shape or form, it's gonna hit our town.
On the train.
They gotta buy a new iPhone.
Yeah, I guess so, I don't know.
We all have to buy a new iPhone next year.
What else, Paris Cafe, I just read a member from them, they got, I don't know if roughed up is the right word, they have to go back to the ARB.
This is too squabbling, when they went to ARB a few months ago.
Yeah.
They said, I will come back to you with details, you may recall that the restaurant.
With the lighting?
The restaurant owner was going away, and they had.
Because remember, we were like, what's up with your lighting?
Yeah.
And so.
Lighting?
So they're going to the ARB later this month, January twenty-first, I think.
They've got three times so far to the ARB, so ARB is roughing them up.
I don't know who this is.
That's, that's okay, the other thing I had in my list is, Jeremy did some big, long study or document that he replied to the state request on affordable housing, what we've done for that.
Well, I don't know, it was more of a public request, but pulling together affordable housing, other types of housing, and we're working on finalizing that.
Oh, great, so we'll see that.
Yeah, I'll get that out.
Oh, that's important.
One of your packets, I'll come back.
He answered, somebody at the state asked him this new thing, and he has to pull it together, and I bet it, I was like, wow, worked hard on that thing, at the end of this month, on the agenda, I wanna put that public comment line in there, if, because people keep asking about stuff, like, on the side, I said, come to a meeting, we'll make a public comment thing.
Oh, right, okay.
Do you want to go there?
Twenty-ninth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, it's probably be the last meeting of the month, so I told that to the PZ and H people, if they have any questions, you know, I said, come to a meeting, ask those questions, whatever you want.
Ninety-minute rule upon us.
Yes, yes, but I got, I got twelve minutes left.
No, we don't worry about the ninth, we worry about the twenty-eighth.
Well, that, yeah, they're exempt, they can talk as long as they want.
Do we notice, how do we notice that?
I think we put on an agenda, we, what we do is, we put the agenda on the town website, we also send the agenda via email to certain folks, including newspapers.
Yeah.
And Darianite and Darian Patch.
Perfect.
The example to me is, is.
I could write a note to them as well.
I mean, I look at, at, you know, the newspaper, and everyone and their brothers talking about Pear Tree Point Beach, no one's asked us one question.
Oh.
I'm like.
That's not true.
That is not the case.
You know?
It's not true.
Very possible.
Right, but they've not asked this body, they might ask you, they might ask you.
They haven't had an opportunity yet.
They haven't attempted yet.
You know, it's, well, it's not an application, so we don't see anything, but if, you know, to me, we've, we've denied and approved things that are in and out of flood zones, and we denied fifty Brookside, that was built in the flood zone, and got sued and lost.
But they, but people, the neighbors of that.
Wait, 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 I feel like we're going.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna go off.
I feel like we're going off the track here, let's wait for this to be a public comment, because.
Correct, what else, and then the last thing, last two things on my list, we're.
Okay, I have your list, I'll just.
Okay, I'm just reading a list, the last thing, two couple of things on my list is pending lawsuits, I, Jeremy, just do a little bit of a pending lawsuits thing, I just wanna find out how much money we spend on lawsuits and how many we have, I think we only have one or two pending.
Right, there's one pending against planning and zoning, which is the Pemberton lawsuit, which we talked about on the twenty-eighth, and there's one ZBA lawsuit pending.
Right.
It's an appeal of decision, basically.
On what, on what project?
That was the end of Beach Drive, the house that's currently being renovated, there was a ZBA variance that was appealed by the neighbors.
I don't, did we ever see that, we might have seen it, no?
Planning and zoning approved it, and that decision was not appealed.
And relative to the Pemberton LL six, we got this on whatever date it was, in November, I read it, I'm not a lawyer, I honestly looked at you two guys, and if you say anything.
I have no specialty in that, that area of housing and whatnot, so.
I looked at it, and said, the only thing we did wrong is we're not federating, we're not following federal guidelines and state guidelines, I don't wanna really get into it too deep, I don't know what else is in it, but.
Yeah, it's the.
We'll be talking more on the twenty eighth in depth.
Yeah, but it's someplace where, you know, our court department spends dollars on it.
But isn't, wasn't your point of bringing this up more to talk about our litigation spending?
We're gonna get, yeah, I just got a memo on that.
And less about the specifications of specific litigations.
Right, right, because we've spent, over, from what I think, what I, what Jeremy sent me later today, we've spent over the last four years, something like over seven hundred thousand dollars in legal fees, I don't know if that's a lot of.
What's the average town spend on legal fees per year?
Two, it's about, it's two hundred thousand dollars.
Let's just say that it's down from where, you know, it really varies.
So it's a two hundred thousand dollar lawyer that we basically have on staff?
Right.
Pretty much.
What, what happens is, a lot of it is certainly outside, any decision that a commission makes is subject to appeal, it might be a perfect decision, right on the money, and people appeal things for all kinds of reasons, whether it's appeals from the Environmental Protection Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning and Zoning Commission, or the zoning officer, that every zoning permit that's issued is subject. or the zoning officer, that every zoning permit that's issued is subject to appeal. Every decision that gets made, every letter that gets issued is subject to appeal.
Right, but one of the things that's important, we had, John, after we redrafted the planning zoning changes, before we, we blessed it or voted on it, we sent it to Loizos and said, can you read all these changes we're making and make sure we're not doing anything wrong? So, we asked them
Right.
for a time. So, of the court of court, two hundred thousand dollars a year that we spend, I think part of it is because of lawsuits, and I don't know the answer yet. Part of it was lawsuits, and part of it's because we asked them to review a document in advance. Like, we did this with resolutions, I remember.
Litigation spending is going to be different than seeking legal advice.
Right.
Because you would have a
I didn't analyze it, it was like that, yeah.
No, in budgeting, you would have a separate line item for litigation.
Right. He, he does that.
You're breaking it.
I'm thinking he's giving you litigation dollars, not advice.
He gave me total dollars.
I gave it all together.
Okay.
Because there are certain things that, for example, an application may come through, and you're like, hmm, boy, we need, Fred and I need counsel on, hmm, how do we treat this? How, or someone asks, there's FOI requests that we run through town council. So, it's all packaged in there, in their hours that they put together on.
So, I'd love to know how many hours on average we use counsel, like, in a month?
In a month?
We'll do that. We'll do that early. I want to get this done with and moving, because I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, because I just got your email at late this afternoon and...
Why are we analyzing this? So, someone must have asked.
Just because I did.
Okay, well, then I, then I want to, okay.
I want to know, how much money do we spend on lawyers and, and, you know, why? That's what people are asking about, how much do we spend on laptops? I want to know how much do we spend on lawyers. That's all. And I think that is it. There was a call today at ten o'clock, and we talked about that a little bit. I got this memo, we all got the memo at seven o'clock. I didn't read it, so. That is the end of my report.
Can I make my?
Of course you can.
You said, why don't you, somebody asked you a question, say, come to the meeting. Two, two comments. One is, you're going to lose control of the agenda and hurry. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we ought not to do it, just, we've got to appreciate that you're going to have people coming and asking questions. The second thing is, this is typical of the agenda that we send out.
Right.
There's no place there for public questions.
The, the, their version of it came up, it, it gets done at the Board of Education meetings.
Okay.
And they do it on every one of their meetings, where they have a public comment section. Seeny, when he was chairman, he tried doing it, and nobody showed up. So, it was on, it was on the agenda for, I don't know, six months, four months, and he was like, any public comment? And you got no takers. If we get no takers, we get no takers.
If you're going to do that, I suggest you put it on there, so it's clear to people.
It will, it will.
I, I think I put it on in, in the way where it says, public comment, but it can't be related to any pending application.
Correct.
So, if you want to talk about BMW tonight, we can't hear you.
But I think they make clear, because, right, because P&amp;Z is different than Board of Education in that, when we have public, we are obligated by law to have public hearings, where the public has every right, without us putting a line item for them, to come and be heard. Board of Education does not have that obligation, so they, in an effort, I think, because it's, they're, you know, I don't really, I can't speak to why they do it, but they do do it, they add in a line item for public comment, I would think, because it's so important, the issues are important, and budgets are so big, and it's, you know, of extreme importance to most of the public to be heard in Board of Education, you know, issues. So, they put that in there, because their meetings are not public hearings. Some of our meetings aren't public hearings.
Yeah.
Where the public can come in without us, give them a line item.
I feel like the meeting's going to go off.
We'll see how it goes.
Yes.
But do we do it for general meetings or for public hearings?
General, general meetings. It's a general meeting, yeah.
Are you going to put it at the end of the night?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know about that.
I don't know either.
Oh, okay.
But then are there restrictions on what they can speak on?
That's true.
No, are they?
Yes. They can't speak on a pending application.
Okay, fine.
Oh, that's fine. Then I think we have to note that somewhere.
Yes, it can be right on the agenda. You cannot speak on...